Good morning, everyone. Happy Tuesday. It's January 28th. The time is 9:00 a.m. And the Board of Ada County Commissioners is in session for our open business meeting. We have all three commissioners with us in the room today. In addition, and we're going to go around and have everyone say their name, but following today's meeting, we just want everyone to make sure and to sign in in the back, and then we can skip that process of going around and stating your name on the record as long as you're signing in. But we'll go ahead and do both today. So we'll start with you, Mr. McQuaid.
Bob McQuaid, Assistant. Bob Perkins, Ada County Prosecutor.
Oh, is that Ada County? Hi, I'm Ada County Attorney.
The Attorney General.
Always on the journey.
About windows or like other.
The clerk of the Attorney General.
I have a new staff at the court.
Perkins County Operations.
Augurin, State Department of Customs Service.
Trace Redmayer.
As always. Steve Boyner, Paramedics.
Don't want to be a venture.
Ray Grant.
What is your opinion?
I don't know.
I'm fine with all of your stuff.
And if they have a question.
What is your opinion?
You can't sneak in, Scott.
I think we got everyone. All right. Any changes to this agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
All right, then it was with great pleasure that we can start out this morning with employee recognitions, and we have two this morning. Shelley Root, 20 years of service, and Sean O'Connor, 25 years of service. So we're very excited about that, and we'll go ahead and have Commissioner Lacheyondo start with Shelley. And read a little bio information, and then we'll present an award and take a photo.
Fantastic. Well, Shelley Root began working at the Ada County Prosecutor's Office in January 2000 as a receptionist, and quickly promoted to legal assistant. Shelley has contributed throughout the prosecutor's office, having worked in the criminal division. And in October 2014, she began as a legal assistant in the civil division. Shelley's background includes handling very complex, sensitive, and tight timeline-driven cases. Thank you, Shelley, and congratulations on your 20 years of service.
So I know there's some folks in the audience that probably have a few words to say.
I do, for sure.
Thank you, Jan.
Jan Bennett, State County Prosecutor. Shelley had received numerous accolades from the Bureau of the District. If you wanted to call out specifically...
Anyone else care to say a few words? Yes, please. We're lucky to have you, Shelley. Would you like to say a few words? And humble, yes. Thank you. We're going to go ahead, then, and we'll move to Sean O'Connor, and we'll have Commissioner Visser say a few words, and then we'll pause the record for some pictures and awards.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a brief letter here for Sean describing the situation. Even though it's brief, the second paragraph is stunning, and I'll explain why in a bit. Sean began working at Ada County in January of 1995 as a court clerk. In late '96, he became an investigator assistant. Sean's prior experience at Ada County, combined with his service experience in the United States Navy, contributed to him being promoted to investigator. Sean has performed as a leader throughout his career, formally and informally, sharing his expertise in advocating for the investigation unit and the mission of the prosecutor's office. Here's the paragraph that is really outstanding. "A recommendation letter from the Honorable Judge Horton accompanied Sean's application to the prosecutor's office in 1996. In part, it read, 'Sean has demonstrated the qualities which forecast his future success. He is intelligent and articulate. He is creative. He demonstrates initiative. He has a great work ethic and takes pride in his work.' That forecast has proven accurate." I've known Judge Horton for several years. I worked with the Idaho Supreme Court, starting back in 1992 as their lead research attorney, and eventually the director of the law library, was very active in judicial education, and I consider Judge Horton one of the most brilliant judges that I've ever worked with. His career in the magistrate, district court were exceptional. At times, he wrote for the Idaho Supreme Court when he was a district judge, and his promotion to the Supreme Court was well-deserved. So any recommendation from such a stellar person is more than glowing, in my opinion. Therefore, with pleasure that I thank you, Sean, and congratulate you on your 25 years of service.
Thank you, Commissioner Visser. Once again, I'm sure there's folks in the audience who'd like to say a few words.
I'm Chair, Jan Bennett. I want to recognize Sean Horton. I can look at you. I have a few... His boss at the time was a great public... I can identify him. I can follow up and ask me. How was the work?
Okay.
Yes, please.
I'm in the prosecutor's office. I've been working for 20 years now. Something about Sean is that problems are over. Can we kind of use that? All of ourselves are embarrassed. Problem can be solved. Variety of lots of life to come into the front desk. Sean gets the task, he solves it.
Anyone else? Sean?
I'm going to go out. Thank you.
Thank you.
But I love the job. I continue to love it.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your service.
We're going to go ahead and pause the record, and we're going to start with having Shelley come up, and she'll take a picture with the board, and then with the team. And then we'll follow the same with Sean.
I think this is what we did last time.
Congratulations.
Bill Wertz.
There we go.
Congratulations.
All right, team, come on up. Anybody who wants a picture here?
You might have to get on the other side of the table. Stand up on it.
You're going to have to make a pyramid.
I'll tell people in the back.
I've got to run about here to here.
You're going to have to get creative.
You'll have to go up behind.
You might not.
It'll work. You guys can do it.
Lots of room between you.
Yeah.
It's a once every 20-year picture.
Everybody smile.
Oh, that's awesome.
All right.
That's it.
You're going to have a picture with Sean.
All right, Sean.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good.
All right, here we go.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I really appreciate your service.
Okay, team.
All right, crowd in and around him.
Yeah, wide angle, that's what we need.
Crowd in.
Back in. If you're on this side, you can't see us.
Almost.
You're going to have to sit a little tighter over here.
Adam, you're going to have to sit.
There you go.
All right, smile.
That's really nice.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Let's go ahead and get back on the record.
You're on the record.
Always a pleasure to be able to honor such professional employees here that are so dedicated to Ada County. Great way to start the morning. Let's go ahead and start with our unfinished business, and I'll need a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table, please.
Madam Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. So we're going to start with the final ranking and request to enter fee negotiations, it looks like, for RFQ 20018. Bob Perkins.
I'm Chair, members of the board. The evaluation team for RFQ 20018, the Professional Consulting for Design and Construction Services for Ada County Jail Expansion Project, has completed the evaluation. The proposal submitted, and would like to submit the final rankings letter for your consideration.
Okay, great.
Okay. Dear members of the board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the responses for RFQ 20018. A shortlist of qualified candidates was determined by evaluation scoring. The shortlist of qualified firms ranked in order of evaluation scoring is as follows. Number one, Lombard Conrad Architects, score of 86.2. Number two, DLR Group, score of 80. Number three, Trainer HL, score of 68.2. The evaluation committee would like to request the board's approval of the final rankings and permission to enter into fee negotiations, beginning with the number one-ranked firm. If negotiations are successful, the operations department will put back on the board's agenda for contract award consideration. Sincerely, Bob Perkins, CPPO, CPPB.
All right, before we move to a motion, is there anyone from the sheriff's office that'd like to say a few words on this? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to accept the final rankings for RFQ 20018, Professional Consulting for Design and Construction Services for the Ada County Jail Expansion Project, and authorize the operations department to enter into fee negotiations, starting with number one-ranked firm.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, we have the word of bid 20025. Mr. Perkins.
I'm Chair, members of the board. The evaluation team has reviewed the bids received for bid 20025, Ada County Landfill HDP E-Pipe Purchase 2020. We would like to submit this recommendation for award through the evaluation.
All right, Commissioner Lacheyondo, do you want to read that into the record, please?
Okay. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it's the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the purchase order for bid 20025 to ISCO Industries as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of $73,235. Sincerely, Bob Perkins, CPPO, CPPB.
Okay, anyone here from Landfill that'd like to say a few words? We're good? All right, let's go ahead and entertain a motion.
Let me do it? Okay. Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee in award bid 20025, Ada County Landfill HDP E-Pipe Purchase 2020 to ISCO in the amount of $73,235.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, new business. We're going to open the public hearing, and we'll take up resolution number 2486, providing for destruction of records. Is there anyone here to make comment or testify, provide testimony? No? All right, destruction of records. We'll need a motion, then.
Madam Chair, I move to approve resolution number 2486 as listed on the agenda.
I'll close the public hearing. Then you can go ahead, I'm sorry.
Again, the motion is to approve resolution number 2486 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, new business. We're going to open the public hearing, and we'll take up resolution number 2486, providing for destruction of records. Is there anyone here to make comment or testify, provide testimony? No? All right, destruction of records. We'll need a motion, then.
Madam Chair, I move to approve resolution number 2486 as listed on the agenda.
I'll close the public hearing. Then you can go ahead, I'm sorry.
Again, the motion is to approve resolution number 2486 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, clerk's office. Anyone here from the clerk's office to report? Okay, we'll move to claims journal. I'll need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated January 24th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, clerk's office. Anyone here from the clerk's office to report? Okay, we'll move to claims journal. I'll need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated January 24th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, personal action forms. I'll need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the personal action forms as listed on the agenda, which includes one leave with pay, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the commissioner's office.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, the assessor's office. Mr. McQuaid, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Got a lot going on in the assessor's office at this point in time. First of all, I just wanted to mention that Commissioner Lacheyondo and I had a wonderful visit with organizations representing the interests of senior citizens last Friday, and the results of that were just absolutely amazing. My staff, who oversees the property tax deduction program, they're really energized. They've already developed some material to get the message out, so that we have more people sign up for Circuit Breaker. My goal this year was to have 10% growth, which would be about 400 new signees. The staff wants to put that up to 1,000, which would just be amazing if we got that and more power to them. So that's the, on the PTR front.
Bob, can you give us an idea of what type of outreach you're going to be doing? Is it through email, mailings, public...
They are doing all of that. Social networking, social media. They've developed just a single page flyer. The information that we hand out now is prepared by the State Tax Commission. And one of the first things that was brought up in that gathering we had last Friday was that is just so dense, it's just very difficult to understand, and it's just not friendly at all. So they've already, my staff has already put together just a single-page flyer. We're going to run that by Elizabeth Duncan, and Elizabeth is helping us get the word out.
So this will hopefully provide some tax relief to our most vulnerable citizens.
Yes, yes.
Anything you'd like to add to that, Commissioner Lacheyondo?
It was just a great opportunity to get some different people together, and I still have to ship out all of the various comments, but I think it's going to be a great group. And I think they're really excited to help us get the word out. So that's the other part, is to have some advocates in the community who can help us extend our reach.
Yeah, and I know you have some initial...
Some other things. Legislation, not only are we addressing legislation that is being proposed and are being printed, but we seem to just be a real resource for information. And my staff has been working very hard getting information to Lorna, to other people involved in legislation, the Tax Commission, to provide the best information we possibly can to the legislature, so that these will be decisions based upon the facts at hand. That's keeping us very busy. And then also, I just wanted to mention that one thing we're, I'm personally working on right now, is a property tax summit for this summer. We saw some presentations presented to the Property Tax Working Group over at the legislature, and I felt that some of the factual information was really missing. In 2006, there was a property tax summit put on by Associated Taxpayers, Vito, and Boise State University. What I'm working on, and I've already talked to Stephanie Witt at Boise State, and she is committed, and she is just seeking the dean's approval right now, and she doesn't see a problem with that, where we will put this property tax summit on in August. And we've got some economists who are nationally recognized as experts in this field, and we'll have some other people. We'll invite legislators and other policymakers to this particular summit, so everyone can have, just really be grounded in factual information, and also consequences of the decisions. That's something I'm very excited about. I'm going to see if the Association of Counties would be willing to lend their expertise in putting these large events on. So that's what's going on in the assessor's office. It's a lot of fun and keeping us real busy.
I always really appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and move on to the treasurer's office. I don't see that one, but, hello, Jim, come on up.
My Commissioners, I'm here on behalf of the treasurer and the treasurer's office. Just wanted to give a few updates, what's going on in the treasurer's office. Both the treasurer and I were able to attend the Assessor's Real Estate Symposium last week, and it was very informative, helps us to really kind of keep pulse of what's going on in Ada County, and kind of the struggles that the counties have in with the growth. And it seems like, from everything we heard there, it's going to continue for the near future, and for the next few years, it seemed like. So that was very helpful for us, since we take a lot of calls from people and answer a lot of questions, so to hear directly from the people in the real estate community was helpful. We're also very committed to the cash handling, and as a result of our experiences, we're putting together some training that we're going to conduct in the treasurer's office. And that includes best practices on how to handle cash. Then we're going to roll that out to other county areas that can find that helpful, such as parks, the fair, solid waste, and that way our employees know the right ways to handle cash, so that everything's accounted for, and we don't accidentally misplace funds and how to store them, and the various aspects of how to handle that. And we're anticipating doing that in the next month and on into the spring. The other thing that kind of is in line with that is some counterfeit training. We had yesterday, a Secret Service agent came out and conducted some training in the recorder's office. It was initiated by us in the treasurer's office, and we put it out to others, and we had a full house. We filled the recorder's large conference room. We had two sessions, and I think the capacity was about 30 for each session, and that's all we could fit in the room. So that as well was very informative, and we'll pass along the information there, as well as some pamphlets for people who handle cash. The agent even brought out a lot of samples for us to look at, and actually touch and feel and see what people do. Some of them were pretty obvious, because of the kind of paper they used, but others were somewhat sophisticated, and unless you knew what to look for, you could easily take that bill without realizing it. And so that's something that we're going to pass along as part of the cash training to various other parts of the county.
Great, thank you so much. Let us know if there's, at some point, we need to look at our policies or create policies around that, and really help shore that up. Happy to do so. Thank you.
Very much.
All right, let's go ahead, then, and move to grants. And it looks like we have one grant, 2002. This is Justice Institute for Courthouse Security Assessment. And I will need a motion on this.
Madam Chair, I move to approve grant number 2002 as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, our favorite, Expo Idaho. This is how we keep up with what's going on in our community, fun events. I'll need a motion for Expo.
Looking forward to Family Summer Palooza. And Madam Chair, I move to approve the six interim event agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
And looking forward to this second. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. There is a pet expo noted on here. 4:25, that ought to be 5:00. All right, Parks and Waterways is up next, and I saw Scott Coburn walk in. Any report from Scott, Parks and Waterways?
No report.
All right, good to see your face. All right, I'll go ahead and take up a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the three Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, agreements, and I'll need a motion for the agreements.
I will call your attention to the Butterfly Adventures Entertainment during the Western Idaho Fair. And as a part of that, I will go ahead and move to approve the five agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, agreements, and I'll need a motion for the agreements.
I will call your attention to the Butterfly Adventures Entertainment during the Western Idaho Fair. And as a part of that, I will go ahead and move to approve the five agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
And I'll fly right in and give a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, our favorite, Expo Idaho. This is how we keep up with what's going on in our community, fun events. I'll need a motion for Expo.
Looking forward to Family Summer Palooza. And Madam Chair, I move to approve the six interim event agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
And looking forward to this second. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. There is a pet expo noted on here. 4:25, that ought to be 5:00. All right, Parks and Waterways is up next, and I saw Scott Coburn walk in. Any report from Scott, Parks and Waterways?
No report.
All right, good to see your face. All right, I'll go ahead and take up a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the three Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, agreements, and I'll need a motion for the agreements.
I will call your attention to the Butterfly Adventures Entertainment during the Western Idaho Fair. And as a part of that, I will go ahead and move to approve the five agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
And I'll fly right in and give a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, procurement. We have a lot on the agenda today for procurement. Bob?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair and Commissioners. We have a number of openings and review and awards, and our first one for today is opening up RFP 20021, the Ada County Real Estate Development Consultant. For this project, we received five proposals, and ready to open if you'd like us to proceed forward.
Please.
We need like a theme song when it opens.
Really appreciate you, your office going electronic and saving all the paper and the boxes.
And my nails.
And your nails and the potential cuts on your fingers.
One of the things that Bonfire does do is track the amount of paper that we're saving, so.
Oh, great. Excellent.
So we have the five proposals up there, Madam Chair.
You just want me to read in the proposer's name? All right, the first one is Call Years International, second one is Cushman and Wakefield, third is Jones, Lang, LaSalle, Americas, Inc., fourth is Santech, and the final one is Zion's Bank Public Finance. Okay, all right. Go ahead, Bob.
Oh, yeah, Madam Chair, we'll need a little time to evaluate these proposals, and we would request this table for final ranking and award recognition to the February 11th, 2020 Open Business Meeting.
Okay. I can go ahead and make that motion. Madam Chair, I move to table the final rankings for RFP 20021, Ada County Real Estate and Development Consultant, to February 11th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, that is, have it, motion carries. Next up, opening of RFQ 20022.
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners, Ada County Procurement received four qualification statements for RFQ 20022, the Design Services and Construction Services for Barber Park Pathways and Parking Improvements for fiscal year 2020. And if Jim Capaz is ready to open, if you would like.
Any comments from Scott at this point? Okay. All right, let's go ahead and open them.
All proposals are up there on the board.
All right, the first one is Breckenland Design, the second is Cushing Terrill, the third is KM Engineering, and the fourth is Quadrant Consulting. Mr. Perkins, you need some time?
Yes, Madam Chair, we will need a little time to evaluate these proposals, and we would like to press this table for final rankings and request entropy negotiations to the February 11th, 2020 Open Business Meeting.
All right, I'll need a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to table the final rankings for RFQ 2022, Design Services and Construction Services for the Barber Park Pathways and Parking Improvements fiscal year 2020 to February 11th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, that is, have it, motion carries. Next up, a review of, this is a bid, a recommendation for Public Works Project for Faces of Hope.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Ada County Procurement received two responses for bid 20028, the rebid of Faces of Hope Victim Center Office remodel 2020. And I have this letter of recommendation for your consideration.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Lacheyondo, would you read it into the record, please?
Okay, Jim, members of the Board, Ada County Procurement received two responses for bid 20028. The following are names of the bidders and the bid amounts submitted. Gafford Construction, Inc., $86,502, and Hellman Construction, Inc., $89,800. After reviewing aforementioned bids submitted, it's the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid 20028 to Gafford Construction, Inc., as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of $86,502. Sincerely, Bob Perkins, CPPO, CPBB.
Any comments or questions from the Board?
No, ma'am.
All right. Bob, you need some time?
We're looking just for a.
Oh, sorry. Just approval, yep. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid 20028, rebid of Faces of Hope Victim Center Office remodel 2020 to Gafford Construction, Inc., in the amount of $86,502.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, that is, have it, motion carries. All right, next up, we have review of bid and award recommendation for bid, this is 20027, 20027. Ada County Sheriff's Office Radio Site Power Library Battery Replacement. All right, Mr. Perkins.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Ada County Procurement just received one response for this project for bid 20027, Ada County Sheriff's Office Radio Site Power System Battery Replacement 2020. Would like to submit this letter of the bids received, or the bid received, and an award recommendation.
Want to read this one into the record?
Why don't you go ahead and handle them? Bob's right across from you.
All right. Okay, dear members of the Board, Ada County Procurement received one response for bid 20027. The following is the name of the bidder and the bid amount received. Number one, Day Wireless, in the amount of $33,975.36. Cents always intrigues me. After reviewing the bid submitted, it's the recommendation of the Evaluation Group to award the purchase order to Day Wireless as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of $33,975.36. Sincerely, Bob Perkins, CPPO, CPBB.
Any questions from the Board? Discussion? Go ahead and make a motion then.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid 20027, Ada County Sheriff's Office Radio Site Power System Battery Replacement 2020 to Day Wireless in the amount of $33,975.36.
Well, that makes.
Yeah, $39,000, you want to repeat it?
Did I say 39? It's 33. Oh, my letter is 33.
Oh, it is 33, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Do you want me to say it again?
No.
Okay.
No, Bob was just giving me the funny look.
Okay.
Something's not quite right.
Okay.
That didn't make sense.
Okay, all right, we need a second.
The motion makes sense, I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, that is, have it, motion carries. And the last one, we have a bid, award recommendation for bid 20032, Ada County Sheriff's Office Board Transit Ban.
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners, the final project for your consideration, the name is bid 20032, the Ada County Sheriff's Office 2024 Transit Paratransport Ban, and we received one response for this project. Award letter for your consideration.
All right, you want to go ahead, Commissioner Lacheyondo, read it into the record?
I'm on reading duty today?
Yep, reading duty.
Dear members of the Board, Ada County Procurement received one response for bid 20032. The following is the name of the bidder and the bid amount submitted. Number one, Davy Coach Sales, Inc., in the amount of $60,631.00. After reviewing the bid submitted, it's the recommendation of the Evaluation Group to award the contract to Davy Coach Sales, Inc., as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of $60,631. Sincerely, Bob Perkins, CPPO, CPBB.
All right, any further discussion of questions, comments? All right, Ellen, go ahead, entertain a motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid 20032, Ada County Sheriff's Office 2024 Transit Paratransport Van to Davy Coach Sales, Inc., in the amount of $60,631.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, that is, have it, motion carries. Last but not least, we have miscellaneous items. The first one on the agenda is juvenile security upgrade funding, and we have, I think this was Operations, and Don Burns is here from, as Director of Juvenile, to discuss why we were over. Is anyone here from Ops on this one? Go ahead, Bruce, come on up. I believe, refresh our memories, but I believe this was over quite a bit, and we wanted a little bit more explanation on this one.
We had a shortfall of what's been allocated by the CIP.
You want to speak into the microphone? Sorry, Bruce.
Sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah. We can hear you, Bruce.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, we had a shortfall in the CIP program allocation for this project of somewhere in the neighborhood of $225,000. I'm not sure what happened. I'm just trying to pick up the pieces on this project. We had a shortfall of of these monies. I think it was due mainly to the scope not being captured as it was discussed. Is that the way you remember it as well?
Is this the one that was estimated a couple of years ago, and then it was not re-estimated?
No.
No, okay, this is different, okay.
This was done last year, and the project manager that was assigned to the project left midstream. And then Scott kind of took it over, and something got missed as far as capturing the full scope of the project. And I think it was the camera part, because we do have the PLCs which control her secure doors for detention area that was captured. We got that money. But it's the cameras that kind of blew the budget on this one.
Any further comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add that, to second what Bruce described, I think what happened is about the same time. We had several cameras fail, and we found that we could go from analog to digital, and so that conversation was had, and somewhere in there, I think that it ended up a question mark, how much would it cost to get the cameras also included? But then the project manager left, and so I think just something got lost in the process. So I agree with Bruce's assessment. I think the difference is the cameras.
That makes sense, yeah. Okay, thank you.
And the estimate was done verbally over the phone, so that may have compounded the error in the total that we came up with for that.
I know we've had a little bit of transition too in the department, so appreciate you're coming back in front of the Board and explaining, as you know, we're very cautious and prudent about taxpayers' money, and we want to account for every dime, so we really appreciate that.
We do have the money to move forward for the shortfall.
Okay, great. All right, before we take up a motion, any further comments or discussion by the Board?
I have a motion.
I don't have a motion.
No, I guess we don't need a motion on this one.
All right.
We'll just say thank you.
Yes.
We'll have a motion to say thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Before we do move on, I know we're going to discuss landfill tipping fees, but I do want to note, just given all of the work that procurement has done, you guys are working fast and furious to get things purchased and allocated, and it also just really points to all the various different types of services that we provide with 1,800 employees and 32 locations, and hearing everything this morning from security doors to batteries to parking lots. You know, it just paints a picture of all the various services that we provide and what it takes to keep everything running. So thank you all for what you do. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right.
Okay, let the record reflect.
Yes, yes. Okay, next up, we have a modification of Ada County landfill tipping fees, and this is continued from a public hearing that we had last week on January 22nd. We held the public record open to receive additional documents until Friday at 5:00. We've now closed that, closed the record on that, and we will be discussing today sort of a quick overview of what occurred during the public hearing, and then deciding if we're going to move forward with a recommendation for a resolution. So Commissioner Lacheyondo, you're the liaison for this project, and I really appreciate all the efforts and time, and definitely amount of time that you've spent learning about the landfill, and I think Kurt and Teresa can attest to that. Diana's jumped in with both feet and has helped with the SWAC Board and with the Cost of Service Study on this, and we were handed this project the day we came into office a year ago in two weeks. So I know you're the, I call you the trash lady expert now.
Right. I wear it with pride, trash lady. Well, first, before we get started, we do have some additional documents we need to enter into the record because we received some additional information as we kept that record open. We have notes here from the City of Boise. We have an email from Harden. We have an email from the Idaho Youth Ranch in addition. So I'm going to go ahead and give those to our clerk to make sure they're entered into the record. Thank you. Okay, so just to kick off the discussion, as Commissioner Kenyon stated, my understanding is that the Board was poised to change rates, really January of last year, and there were some questions and concerns, perhaps, about the methodology. You know, that's sort of water under the bridge at this point, but I think it really opened up an opportunity for us to have a more robust conversation with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee to really dig in, pun intended, to what the issues are, and build some relationships with that group and get a sense of what was going to be fair and equitable moving forward. And last week during our public hearing, we have what I would say are some disparate perspectives on how we should move forward. I'll go ahead and share what I'm inclined toward, but certainly interested to hear what you all are thinking. You know, I think for a number of years, we've been operating under this dual volume versus weight model that has really created some inequities in the community, and more than that, so has pushed some of the burden of those costs onto our residential customers versus our commercial customers, and really caused some problems operationally for our landfill staff in terms of how they operate up there, and sometimes customers perhaps taking advantage of that dual structure to get what they perceive to be a better deal. So I am fully supportive of moving to one rate. We had a couple different ideas presented to us and a couple, some nuance within those, that there's some questions about whether transfer stations should get a different rate, some questions about whether we should be lowering a rate for some recyclables. Additionally, some questions related to some of these nonprofit groups and whether they should receive a lowered rate. So just to sort of frame up the discussion, I think that's what we're looking at. Whether we want to keep one rate for everyone, or if we need to look at some nuance within that. And I'll kind of leave it there for now, and I have some perspectives on that, but certainly interested if there's other things people want to fill in.
Anything for me, Commissioner?
I'll wait on it.
Okay, I too am really interested in looking at the relief of fees from some of the groups and nonprofits and some of the other groups that we've been giving fee decreases to, ACHD, for example, and really kind of walking through those and understanding those a little bit better. I know that we were presented some information and testimony at the public hearing, but I really want to understand really the overall impact. I mean, I understand, for example, the Idaho Youth Ranch is one of those folks who submitted, submitted a letter, and they're in the business of really helping the community, and the materials that they take, in my mind, that's giving those materials a second, a second chance, if you will, and putting those back to good use. And so I really hesitate to try to, because I think that does keep them out of the landfill, at least for a while, because they're being, they're being utilized again and hopefully again and again. So I'm inclined to take a look at those nonprofits more on an individual basis and determine if we should be giving them a discounted fee or not.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that would be a point of discussion that I'd like to add to. I thought it was interesting that Idaho Youth Ranch made that presentation. I believe they have a 50% discount, while some of the others have 100% one, and I think that warrants a case-by-case analysis, but we could certainly group other nonprofits that are similar to Idaho Youth Ranch, I believe anyway, in that 50% one, and then see what's going on with the trade-off or agreement that we have ACHD, who I believe has 100% one. Is that correct, Anne?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I agree with you on that, thank you.
So I have a little bit of nuance to add to that. I think when I look at our free and reduced accounts, you know, best I can tell is that it's just sort of an accumulation of history in terms of different breaks that the Board has given in the past. And I would propose that we probably need to look at some framing and structure around what those, who should qualify for a discount and why, and how does it tie to the mission of the landfill? You know, absent that, I think we just get ourselves down a kind of a perilous path of this person got a discount, therefore that group should get a discount. And, you know, in some of these cases, this is very sad to say, but, you know, we've got a Humane Society, we've got these animal organizations, and I, you know, certainly appreciate that they're 501(c)(3)'s, but they, I don't believe are reducing additional material to the landfill based on what they're doing. You could make a case for all kinds of different groups who might benefit from a reduced rate. We're going to, I think, in my opinion, really need to create some framing, probably separate from this conversation, about what it takes to receive that kind of discount. So that would be my first piece. The second piece, I think we have some questions certainly around, particularly as it relates to solid waste, specifically sewage sludge, that's a fun term, coming from some of our communities, and then how that relates to specifically ACHD. And I just sort of want to call a spade a spade and recognize that, you know, we have some communities who are taking their. you know, we have some communities who are taking their sewage sludge, which is very heavy, and applying it in other areas of the community to keep it out of the landfill and then turn it into crops, et cetera. And we have some other communities who are bringing that sewage sludge to Ada County and it is taking up airspace in the landfill. And I think it's a challenge, certainly for those communities, to find another place to go. And I want to recognize that and appreciate it. But I also think at the end of the day, it's taking up airspace. And that is really our most precious commodity at this point, is the airspace in the Ada County landfill. And everything that we can do to incentivize people to have things go other places is a positive for us. So I would be inclined on a couple of fronts. If we're going to do that, if we're going to move to one, one rate, I would be inclined to say we go toward the $29 rate, but that we need to keep it as equal as possible. And that's going to include both ourselves. So no more discounts for the Western Idaho Fair, no more discounts for our Parks and Waterways, et cetera, but also other aligned agencies. We really need to show what the actual cost of doing business is at the landfill and we shouldn't really be giving those kinds of breaks just because they happen to be in aligned agency. That's a hard conversation to have. I believe our chief of, our chief operating officer has sort of started that conversation with ACHD. They would be the one who would probably hurt the most from this. But it's, in my opinion, we have to be open and transparent about what the actual cost of doing business is, whether that's sewage sludge or street sweepings. This is really glamorous stuff, by the way, as you can tell. Additionally, I think there's some questions about specifically recyclables and how do we incentivize the treatment of recyclables. I did not find the idea of moving to a $33 rate particularly compelling. That was, seemed pretty exorbitant based on our cost of service study. I would propose we start with the $29 rate and continue to have conversations about whether we need to look at a lowered rate specifically for wood waste, knowing that's our largest amount of items that takes up space in the landfill. And I just am really struggling with whether we can force people to recycle it at the landfill or whether we need to incentivize it to encourage good behavior. Maybe that's the mom in me, but the positive reinforcement, I find, to always be a helpful motivational tool. If we need to give people cookies too, we can do that. So that would be my inclination is to, if I'm to package all of those things together, I'm going to, I'm going to recommend a $29 rate for everybody. Take a look at our additional recycling opportunities and let's put some structure around the nonprofit rates and who can qualify for that. Are you in agreeance?
I am in agreement. I'd just like to add my gratitude and thank you to Diana for just a A-plus extra effort in getting involved in this, being so informed, keeping the board informed, just being such a great trash lady. Thank you very much.
You know, I'm going to, we got to put that on my landfill jacket, trash lady. Okay.
Queen trash lady. So at this point then, what we're looking for then is a motion for this board to move forward with a recommendation to adopt a resolution to accept the $29 rate tipping fee. And I think that we also want to make sure that we leave the conversation open. We have a lot of work to do, as you can see by the discussion today, and want to keep the conversations open for the nonprofits, a reduction in fees as well as incentives for recycling. So with that, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Okay, and just a recognition that this is going to be set for the coming year. So this is the real opportunity for us to signal to our fellow cities and agencies so they can start to build this into their budgets.
And if you have an idea on a date for us to adopt the resolution? A week, two weeks, a couple of weeks?
We have a date? February 4th. So Madam Chair, I am going to make a motion to set a, I guess we want to call it preliminary rate until we make our final motion, of $29 for landfill tipping fees with a note that we will continue discussions around recyclables as well as nonprofit rates.
And this is to adopt a resolution?
To adopt a resolution, yes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, that is have it, motion carries. All right, any further discussion? Hearing now, we're in recess. Thank you.